Welcome you for coming tonight. And this will be a good opportunity for people to hear your views about the district and why you would like to, why you're running for school board. And I'll give, we'll start with giving you each two minutes to introduce yourselves and then talk about why you're running for school board. And Mike, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Mike Cross. I was born and raised in Faribault. Um, myself and my four children have gone to school here in Faribault. I did graduate high school and college in Arizona, lived there most of my adult life, came back here in 2014, and came back home. I have a daughter in 10th grade right now. Been pretty involved in what's going on with the schools and things that I want to keep, keep being involved with, with what's going on. By doing that, being on the board would help a lot so I could actually have a voice. Now I get to talk once in a while, but it'd be nice to actually have a voice and look at some of the issues that, uh, that are out there that we see. Um, I have spent six years on the STEM school board. I was a treasurer for about a year and a half, and I was a board chair for about a year and a half. That, those terms have ended. I term limited out, so now I'm going to focus on the public schools. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Mike. And we'll move on to Janet Moline.
My name is Janet Moline. I've been living in Faribault for almost 25 years now. I've been in business development. I'm nominated Small Business Person of the Year and a guest speaker by the Small Business Administration to various colleges on business startup and development. Recently, I've been serving on the School Reorganization Committee, and I'm running for school board because last year we spent $90 million to educate 3,028 children, and the educational outcome was abysmal. 19% proficient in math, 32% proficient in reading, and 20% proficient in science, and nearly 25% didn't graduate at all. Um, I, it's, I think we need to take a look at administration. Uh, nationally, administration has went from, um, 8% up to 138% increase. And in Minnesota, over the last 20 years, we've seen an increase, uh, in non-teaching staff from 5% to 180, if you do the real math on it, 180%. It's, it's enormous. So I think, um, I don't know what it is in this specific school district, but enrollment is down 25% in, since 2010. So it's, there, that kind of an increase is unsustainable and unexplainable, and that's what I would like to work on.
Okay, thank you. Candace, I will move on to you, Candice Knutson.
Hi. My name is Candace Knutson, and I'm running for school board, or school board because I feel like I, I'm an insider. I retired from teaching at the Faribault High School and the Area Learning Center two years ago. I currently work part-time at Adult's Basic Ed, working with adults who are studying for their diplomas, their JED diplomas or their high school diplomas. I, um, so I graduated from Faribault High School. I moved away for 20 years, and I came back and got my teaching license, and so I feel like I'm a good person, I have a good perspective on what is working and what maybe could, needs improvement. And there's a lot of things that our, um, our schools are needing to address, um, and the declining enrollment. We're talking about, um, reorganizing, um, our schools, and we'll see how that goes. And, um, and then also with diversity, it's, our, our scores are not good, but I think that our teaching staff does really well. And, um, and so I just feel like I kind of know what's going on, and I would like to have more say in future decisions for our schools.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Candace. And moving on to Richard Olson.
Yes, uh, thank you for holding this debate. Um, I've been in this community since 1978 with a wonderful, beautiful wife and four kids, all graduated from Faribault. Uh, in addition, we're raising our grandson, um, and he's a senior this year, and he's going to hopefully become a veterinarian, so he really loves school here. Um, I'm retired now. I used to be a state-certified billing official and real estate investor. I'm running my, for my fifth term on always three issues. I always have three issues. One is student achievement. Um, it'll be brought up in the debate, of the scores are just so terrible. I mean, it, it is embarrassing for our district, and hopefully that we can change that. Second is safety. You know, the fighting and disrespect of students towards teachers have to be solved. I believe in expulsion. It's not, um, well-known in the, in the school board that, um, that could solve a problem, but again, that's my opinion. Last is that we have to get back to basics. You'll be hearing that through the night, uh, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and not really get into social engineering. Um, other than that, it's, uh, it's a pleasure. I've 16 years of serving the, um, the public, and I've enjoyed it immensely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll move on to Jerry Robichaud.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, A U W, for hosting this. I know I've sat at this table a couple of times when you've done this, and I appreciate the fact that you're affording us an opportunity to reach out to the community to, uh, talk about, um, why we're running for the school board. Uh, I am a resident of Faribault for over 40 years. Um, I had two children go through the system. Uh, I currently have one grandchild. I have served on the school board, uh, filling in for an appointed position, and then was re-elected. Uh, so I have four years, uh, prior to that, I served for eight years on the school board. Um, I have a total commitment to the Faribault Public Schools from the standpoint of my number one goal is to make sure that we have a culture of educational excellence in this school system, that our number one focus, our number one focus is always on the student and what we're doing for students, not going beyond that. I say to many people, "Schools are built for kids. We as adults are invited into their environment. That's where learning takes place. We're there to facilitate learning on their behalf." And, uh, we'll probably hear a lot of solutions tonight to problems, or at least proposed solutions, but education is a complex process. There is no one simple solution to the issues that we face in education today.
Thank you. Cassie Steves.
Hi, everyone. Thanks to the A U W for hosting.
Good call.
Hosting, I'm very short, so, um, I'm Cassie Steves. I'm seeking reelection for my second term on the Faribault Public School Board. Um, so I'm actively involved in the Faribault community through a variety of roles, including my career at the Faribault Chamber of Commerce. Um, my husband and I met in high school and have lifelong ties to Faribault. We chose Faribault as a place to raise our three children. We've got a sixth grader, a first grader, and one that will enter pre-K next fall. Um, so over the last several years, both in, you know, my personal life and my professional role, I've developed a really strong understanding of how our local government operates and a passion for how our government can work for its citizens. Um, you know, as a lifelong resident, I understand, um, the importance of having a strong public school system and how it relates to our economy. My most important role is a parent, um, and I want my kids to be successful and all of our kids to be successful as well. I remain committed to growing student achievement with a really less-than-ideal budget. Um, focusing on our district goals is really important, of being ready for kindergarten, reading well by third grade, maintaining, uh, middle-grade math proficiencies, and graduating high school with real-world, um, skills. Um, so along with, with those, focusing on the district goals, I'd love to grow our student base by continuing to offer innovative programming such as immersion, language immersion, and career pathways. My kids have had a really great experience, really different experiences. The youngest was in first, or, excuse me, my oldest was in first grade when COVID hit. Um, so just the drastic differences between, uh, learning styles between boys and girls, um, but learning styles between my two kids.
Okay, thank you. Um, our first question that we'll take tonight has to do with challenges faced by the Faribault School District. I'd like you to give your biggest challenge that you see they're focusing now and some solution to it. How might you address it? And we'll start with Janet Moline.
Um, I think that we've spent, we've thrown money at this problem for year after year after year. The educational outcome continues to decline. Money is not the solution. So we, I believe we need to reduce the level of administrators, which is enormous as a relationship to the students, and put the education back at the, at the student level. So reducing administration and increasing teaching.
Thank you. Candace, what's your idea of the biggest challenge faced and how might you deal with it?
Well, I think we need to get our students ready to learn, and so that's a big point of like our, um, our test scores are not great. So, um, I would like to see us expand our pre-K and kindergarten so that, um, right now there's waiting lists for students to get in. And also to make different things attractive for students and parents to want to choose our Faribault Public Schools, and then to have a lot of support with teachers and parents and people like that in our classrooms to work with our students.
Okay, thank you. Richard, what do you feel is the biggest challenge and how might you address it?
It's always been student achievement. In fact, I got some statistics here, uh, from the state of Minnesota. Um, a, uh, math, 19.5% passed. Reading, 32.4. Science, 20.3. It's not even close to an F, which is 50%. We have to do better. Uh, more money is not the answer. Is, I, I believe we have to really be serious of increasing these test scores, let our teachers and parents teach. They are frontline troops. We have to do a lot better. Uh, right now, um, we're not, and we'll be discussing this at a board meeting on Monday at a work session, but that's, has always been, um, my goal is to increase student achievement. Of course, I've been working on that for 16 years, and it's, I come up with, against a lot of block walls.
Thank you. Jerry Robichaud, what do you think?
Thank you. Um, interesting question, um, because I think it's challenges, not challenge. I think there's more than one challenge in public schools today. Um, as we take a look at, at diversity is an issue that we are facing in Faribault Public Schools. Definitely, we've faced it for the last several years. How do we embrace diversity as an asset rather than a liability? And I think far too often, we've looked at diversity as an, as a liability. Um, so I think being able to address the diversity and the changing diversity that we have. Um, also, um, as far as the test scores go, that's a snapshot. Uh, it is not a longitudinal picture of how our students are doing. So we need to take a look at a, a better way of, of addressing that. I think also the, uh, number one fundamental thing we need to do is to give our teachers the resources they need to teach, being able to do what is, they're trained to do, what their skill set is, and that's to teach students. We need to make sure they have the resources available to do that. And once we do that, then we can address, at least we've got to start on addressing the challenges that we face in public education today.
Thank you. Cassie Steves.
Um, so like many other people, like Jerry mentioned, um, I think it's challenges instead of just challenge. Um, I think obviously growing student achievement with our difficult budget. Over my tenure on the board, we've cut multiple millions of dollars out of our budget. At that point, there's no fat left to trim. We're cutting programs, we're cutting teachers, we're, we're taking the resources directly out of the classroom. I don't agree with our district, um, our district isn't growing their administrative staff at the rates that are being shown over, we're one of the lowest in the state for administrative staff ratios. Um, we're the lowest in the, in the Big Nine, but how do we use our local resources, the money that we get from the state and the money that we get from the federal government to really put into our classrooms to affect the four basic district goals, which are as basic back-to-education as you can get, of reading well by third grade, being ready for kindergarten, having eighth-grade math proficiencies, and graduating on time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, as some of them said, academics is huge. Um, with the new reorganization thing coming up, hopefully the vote comes in where all the preschool and K go to Gar, or not Garfield, to Roosevelt, where we're all in the same place, all in the same building to learn off of. It's proven that the kids that go to our preschools stay in our school. Um, our test scores are terrible. There's no doubt about it. Somebody's got to come up with an answer. Do I have the, the answer? I got some ideas, but I don't have the answer right now. But also, you got to look at the diversity we're talking about. We, when I went to school here, there was one Mexican guy, one black family. That's it. Now, it's, we're, you know, the white people have a minority in school, so we have people coming from different languages, taking a test that's not in their language, and they're, they're learning English. If I go to Germany and try and take a test, they're probably not going to do very well. I go to France, they're probably not going to do very well, well neither. As far as, um, the administration goes, I agree with Cassie 100% on it. You look at the people at the administrative office, they're all holding two and three titles. They're doing two and three jobs. So we are not, we are at the bottom of the state, and we are at the bottom of the Big Nine as far as administrative staff. That's the bottom line. That's facts. Thank you.
Okay. Several of you have alluded to stuff about the budget and what money does and what money does not do. I guess, um, the questions relate to, if you're elected, how do you assure that we really take a hard look at the budget to reduce waste, if there is any, and some people say there is not? Um, and, uh, we're looking at some tax increases again, and, um, are, where should those increases go to help in our schools? And Candace, who will go first?
Okay, um, so I think that what we can, you know, for one thing, we have to secure our students to stay in our schools because with declining enrollment, um, we're losing out on those tax dollars. And, um, and so, so to get them, get students in, and, I mean, I'm in the schools, so, I mean, I, I sub a little bit at some of the other schools, and I see our teachers are working really hard and, um, you know, and I, I do question some of the positions that are, um, that we are, um, that we have with our schools, that maybe we could cut some administration rather than teachers because we keep cutting our teachers. But I think we have really great programs. I think we're doing a lot of things really well, and, um, I think we're getting our kids ready for school. I'm, I'm very supportive of our Spanish immersion program, and, um, I would like to see that expand and so that it gives our Spanish-speaking kids a little, um, easier go at getting into education, and it gives our English-speaking kids an opportunity to learn another language.
Thank you. Richard, what would, are you looking at, uh, in using our tax dollars and whether we need more budget cuts, et cetera?
Well, again, the budget, dealing with that, is very difficult in the state of Minnesota. Uh, but 16 years on the school board, um, which I lose the vote on that, of contracts, they always go above our budget, which then takes away, I always ask the finance director, "If we go above our budget, will that hurt the kids?" And the answer is always yes. But they keep on doing it, then I keep on voting no, and the rest, I keep on voting yes. Um, when they talk about administration, I guess I want to call, uh, talk about the middle management, the directors and coordinators. We got quite a few. It's been increasing over many years. Some of, some of those people have no idea what they do. Um, and second, and third is that, uh, pouring more money into it, to our district, will not solve the problem. I will oppose any kind of operating levy in the future unless that we really straighten up, um, we know how to budget, um, you know, tight budget, but again, pouring more money into it will not solve the problem, and, um, I guess that's it.
Thank you. Jerry.
Um, first of all, Candace, thank you for giving the pitch on the Spanish immersion program. Um, since I've been on the board, I have advocated that we have a language immersion program for long periods of time, and finally we got there, so thank you, because it has been a tremendous asset to our schools. Thank you for giving that pitch. Uh, there's a presumption there that there's waste in our school system, financial resources. That's not true. We have gone through budget cuts, and I think that, um, this district, ever since I've been associated with it, has been very prudent in their discussion about budgets, and they've been very, um, cognizant of what needs to be done. They've been, uh, they've fulfilled their fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we are allocating our resources where they should be and how they should be allocated. Um, so to say that there is a fat in our district from the standpoint of resources and finances, that is not true. We spend our resources as the limited resources that we have from both state and local and other, um, avenues of resources. So we are very, very efficient in dealing with our resources that we received from the taxpayers of Independent School District 656 and the state of Minnesota. Um, I think we always can be prudent in looking and, at where those resources are going. Um, are we in fact allocating 80% to the classroom, 20% in support of classrooms? And I don't think there's a person in this district that isn't actively supporting what's going on in the classroom. So when you say that we have more administrators there, they're to support what's going on with our teaching and learning.
Thank you. Kathy Steves.
Um, so the saying, "It's a marathon, not a sprint," comes to mind. Um, so continuing to right-size and, and look and ensure that we're, we're doing the right thing, sometimes those things cost a little bit more money to make sure that our students are achieving and learning how, how to do some of these things. I mean, I think everyone has made excellent points. Um, there's not an ounce of, of fat that I've found in this budget. I don't, I don't think that we could, could find something that isn't absolutely necessary, but continuing to have a, a growth mindset while also ensuring that we're, we're spending our money where it's working and being flexible at the same time.
Thank you. Okay, I came up with, oh, you skipped me.
Oh, I, I did. I gotta go back over here.
No, you're gonna be last. No, they go, I was first, then you, then her, then him.
Now it goes back over.
You'll be last.
Now it goes back over to here.
He was first, you'll be last. I was first, the first time, Cassie was last, and you were first and I was last.
No, I started, so next is mine.
My turn, you're next.
No, it's Mike's turn.
Okay, make no mistake about it, folks. School system is a business, which has a budget. How do we get our revenue? Students. Majority comes from the students. I agree with Jerry, I agree with Cassie. I go to most board meetings. Dick Dadowich is the only one that goes to more meetings than me, probably. Okay? Uh, go to the meeting and see what happens. Don't hear from your friends what they think happens, because it's realistic in their meetings, these guys have been cutting budgets, have been cutting this, cutting everything they can to the bare minimum. They had to cut one of the, uh, coaching staffs this year. Chad Wolf is actually going to be a volunteer coach this year because his position had to be cut out because of the things there. So the budget, they work with the budget the best they can with what the money we get out from the state. It's very confusing on how the money comes in. Don't come in, back to, um, I mean, going back to the administration part, we're, we're not there. We don't have an abundance of people in offices that aren't doing nothing. Everybody's working hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Janet.
Okay. The money doesn't come from the state. It all comes from the taxpayer. We spent $90 million. That's almost $30,000 per child, and you're going to tell me there's no waste in that? $30,000 per child? We could have sent them to Shattuck. Um, and the, as, outcome is abysmal, just abysmal. So I, I don't know how you can justify what you're spending with the outcome you've given these children.
Okay. Okay. Next, Richard, you'll go first on this question. And, uh, sort of several of you alluded to the parents' role. Uh, sometimes I think we all put all the blame and stuff on the school and administrators and stuff, but parents are there. They are the first educators of their children, and I talked to a, someone who's at a kindergarten thing, and she said, "Boy, the kids who went to early childhood are doing really well, starting at kindergarten. They can read their name and recognize it." There are many kids, she said, coming in kindergarten who have no clue of the alphabet or what, but they spend more time with families than in the school. So, um, what efforts might you think about in making parents more involved in things, and what ideas might you have with it? And do you, uh, also, as, as issues come up with, with kids in the district, do you support that the families get involved in the decision-making with what happens with their kids, especially with, um, with kids needing maybe some other, some other mental health or physical issues? And so how do you kind of bring the parents in with the school together? Richard?
That's a big question, isn't it?
It is.
Um, I've said many times over my career, parents are very critical. Um, they should have a voice because they're paying the bills. But sometimes, um, schools really don't welcome the parents. And maybe don't show up, we'll just, you know, educate your kids. I know personally, we're involved, we go to conferences, um, all the time. We have never missed a conference. Uh, we get involved, we sign permission slips, but it's up to the parents to say, "How are you going to educate my kids? You could opt out of testing or certain programs of the social engineering, which is not proper at all." Um, so they, they should control, but I don't know if parents really realize that, just how much control they've got. They've got it, you know, with, we're up here voting for us also, that, um, they can stand up. I wish more parents would come to board meetings and just talk, just talk to us. But a lot of times, you look, you know, out there, and if it wasn't for the staff and the reporter, there wouldn't be anybody really out there. But again, I encourage the parents to show up at schools, especially conferences, um, call the teachers, meet with them, and they're very good about that. I've never had any problems with any teachers, but definitely, you know, get involved more than what you are.
Thank you. Jerry Robichaud, how do you see parents working with the schools better?
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to ask you to visualize a three-legged stool at this point. And the three legs of the stool, consider the seating of the stool is student achievement. Three legs, you have the parent, you have the teacher, and you have the student. If any one of those legs is absent, what happens to the stool? It doesn't stand. So it has to be a partnership between the three parties called parent, student, and teacher. to be a partnership between the three parties, called parent, student, and teacher. A good example is the way early childhood does their parent-teacher conferences. A way of reaching out to parents is to visit the home. Kindergarten does that as well. When we get to the older students, we invite parents into our environment, to the school environment. Why are we not going out into their environment, wherever they choose, and find out more about the dynamics of what's going on in their family? Kids are bringing a lot of things to school that we, as educators, don't have knowledge of. And I think we need to do a better job of reaching out. But visualize that three-legged stool. If we don't have a partnership of all three legs, working in harmony and in collaboration, that stool is gonna fall down. And that's where we have to make sure that our parents are engaged to the fullest extent they possibly can, parent or parents, fully extended, to engage students in their learning.
Thank you. Cassie Steves, same question. How would you see involving parents more in collaboration?
I always have to follow Dr. Rubashow when he tells his story. So, I have three kids, and I know firsthand what a struggle it is when your child isn't doing well in school. I think our school system, our teachers, our administrators, everyone, from the janitor to the principal, really partners with parents. I feel welcome every time I go in, every time my husband goes in. I think parents play a tremendous, tremendous role in their education. The school system has them from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They're at their parent or guardians the rest of the time. So, it's a true partnership. And, you know, I originally ran in 2020 and hoped to inspire other moms, other parents, to run for school board and to be actively involved in their child's education. Again, my kids, both of them have had very positive experiences in Fairbough Public Schools, but very different experiences when it comes to learning. So, being a partner with each teacher and just asking for strategies, but also remembering, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. And I'm not the most patient person in the world. And sometimes, it was like, "Why aren't you reading? Why can't you just read it?" It's the simplest thing. But being a partner with your child's teacher and the school system is incredibly important.
Great. Mike Cross, same question.
There's a very good analogy there, Jerry, of the stool. I like that. And Pat, you're 100% right. Education begins at home. But newsflash, folks, it doesn't stop when they go to school. The school system's not a babysitter. You have to be involved. It's proven that the parents that are involved, students do better. Parents that go to athletic events for kids, the kids do better. We have to get, Richard's 100% right, there's not many people that go to that board meeting besides staff, Dick, Carolyn, myself. But we gotta get parents involved and talk to these guys. They'll listen. They're there before the meeting, they're there after the meeting. They'll listen to what you got to say. Whether they do anything about it, that's up to them. But I have experience that they have listened to everything that I've said. So, I think parents involve, stay involved, stay involved with your kids until you pass away, bottom line. Thank you.
Janet Moline, same question about encouraging parents to work with the school district.
I think we've, through taxation and regulation, we've moved the burden of child rearing from the family to the state, and it has not done us well. And I would say, remember when some of us were younger, one person could stay at home, and another one could go to work and support the whole household. Now, everybody has to work, and the burden is falling more and more on the school system. And it has to be reversed. I would say, stop growing the government. The Bureau of Labor Statistics had an interesting stat, that 50% of all jobs created in the last 12 months were government-funded directly or indirectly. The other problem with that is it takes 40 people in the private sector to pay for one government job. It is unsustainable. We have to stop this profligate spending at every level, particularly when the outcome is so poor.
Okay. Thank you. Jerry, I'll have you start.
No, 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 no.
Oh, too bad. Forgot Candace.
You're doing a good job, Pat.
We'll keep you on track. So, I work at Fairbough Education Center three mornings a week, and we have an early childhood component there. And now, I see that we have more parents from diverse backgrounds coming in and learning about how to be with their children and to, you know, I mean, some parents don't realize you're supposed to talk to your children. You're supposed to be engaged with them, you know, as babies. And so, I think we're doing good with planting that seed. And then, I think also, we need to expand our pre-K so that our kids are ready for school. And then, we have to keep in mind that we have parents who don't speak English, and they come from different backgrounds. And so, you know, so it's kind of like, how are they supposed to engage with us when they can't communicate? We do have, so like when I was teaching, I would have parents come in, and we would have translators. Another thing is, is that I'm not real familiar with it, but we do have community education at our elementary schools, where we bring the community in for, you know, I think it's like one night a week or something like that. And so, that parents feel welcome in our school, and they can see what their kids are doing. And just, you know, and just to remind them, you know, that it's like, let our kids, get our kids to read, get our kids to focus on activities, and there's mental health and social engagement. And put away the cell phones.
Thank you. We had a couple of questions about this. Jerry, you'll answer first. What's your position on banning books from school libraries?
I'm not in favor of banning books. I think that's censorship. I think it's not what we should be doing. I believe that we need to be conscious and diligent in reviewing our library sources, but I am not in favor of banning books.
Cassie Steves?
Nowhere in history has it ever been a good idea to ban books. So, obviously, I'm very much against that. But I do think that books should be reviewed for appropriateness. They should be reviewed for readability, but no to banning books.
Okay.
The answer is no. No, no, no. Against the Constitution. Bottom line is, what we need to do is look at age-appropriate. For instance, books that are in the high school, obviously, we don't want a kindergarten to read. But maybe there's a way to check books out according to what grade you're in. Seniors and juniors can, are obviously more mature, older, can understand stuff from a sex class and things like that. I mean, I know what the books are talking about. I've seen them. But you start banning books, and this isn't the Soviet Union.
Janet Moline?
Every gallery and every library curates the art or the books that it wants to present to achieve the goals that it has in mind. So, while I don't believe in book banning, I do believe in curating what we are presenting for our children.
Okay, thank you. Candace?
Okay, so, on the front page of the Fairbough paper, it's, we, like, last school year, it said that Fairbough Public Schools have a lot of porn. So, I went to the library, well, now, we don't even have a librarian, anybody who sits in the library and oversees it. But I went and I asked, "Where is that, where are those porn books?" And she laughed. It's just like, "No, we don't have porn books. We don't..." And another thing is, you know, so I'm not into banning books. And another thing is, is that our kids aren't reading. So, I think if we had a banned book section, I think if we had a porno book section, our kids wouldn't be taking them out anyway.
They do look...
You know, so it's, you know, and I just think that we need to get our kids, give our kids more opportunity to read books of their choice. And I don't think that they're gonna be grabbing any, well, I mean, and some of the books that are banned, you know, I've heard that, like, To Kill a Mockingbird was banned. And it's just like, I think that we need to expand the books that we have and get our kids reading. And it's not gonna be, you know, porn books.
Richard?
In fact, the entire board is not gonna ban books. I mean, that's just silly. But we had a presentation from one of our attorneys. Two ideas, that you can restrict books before they get on the shelves. So, you're not banning any books. You just, you have to review the books before we purchase them or before they're given to us. Second is that we're working on this about eliminating some books. There's a service out there that I think Lina Boudreau knows that actually reviews the books. There's sections that, what they call porno, should be brought forward and let the, yeah, committee, I think we're gonna form a committee to review that and advise the school, the school board if we should remove, I don't like the word "ban," remove it from our libraries. But again, nobody on the school board wants to just start banning books.
Thank you. We're running out of time, and I wanna make sure that you have time for each of you to give a closing statement. We have more questions we're not gonna be able to get to, but if there's... Oh, 9 o'clock? I'm sorry. Oh, good. We can get to... Okay, I have a couple of questions about reorganization. And I don't know, I think Janet said maybe she was on a committee with it or something, but...
Three of us were.
Mike, so, I don't know if the listeners even know about what's being proposed with reorganization. Along with that, someone asked a question, would that include consolidating all our elementary schools, which are not at full capacity? So, anyway, maybe you can help us be, your views on reorganizations, and where do you stand, and what would you like to see?
Yeah, so, the reorganization came before the school board last year. I personally voted against reorganizing, because there wasn't enough details. I felt that there wasn't enough buy-in from staff. I received countless calls from staff members asking questions of how it would work. It was going to be re-implemented the following, within months. So, I voted against that. One thing that was really important to me was that we established a reorganization community, or committee, that was comprised of members of our community, as well as staff members. So, that group met several times over the last several months, and they came up with several options, six options. Personally, I would like to see more options. My hope and my mindset is that we have to look at this through a budgetary lens. Each of the options has a specific dollar amount that we would be reducing from our budget. But what's really important to me is to weigh that against the educational value of each plan. So, we've got a plan as a school board to ask questions, and these will keep coming up. So, I'm undecided at the moment of where I'll be, where I'll land, as far as which option works the best for our community.
Thank you. Mike Cross?
Okay, I myself, along with Janet and Dick that are in the room, I don't see anybody else that was on it. We were all on that committee and all very active.
Candace said...
Or Janet, I'm sorry. Okay, we were all very active on that. Basically, why are we reorganizing? Reorganizing, one, enrollment's down, two, budget cuts. So, they're looking at six proposals. One thing that's kind of unanimous in the proposals is, we need, is to close the ALC, sell the ALC, turn McKinley into that.
Do you want to say what that is for people who don't know those initials?
What's that? Oh, ALC is Adult Learning Center, which is alternative school for kids that used to be the kids that went to work when we were younger. Now, it's just any kid that doesn't fit into this, into the school system. Okay, hold on. Struggling going on here.
He broke it. He broke it.
Okay, so, basically, there's six proposals out there. Two of them, to me, are terrible. The other four are, it's a coin flip. Jerry might have a different idea. Richard might have a different idea. It's a coin flip on what to do with it. One of them is grade banning. I don't know if anybody knows anything about grade banning. But grade banning would basically put first and second graders at Jefferson, third, fourth, and fifth at Lincoln. And all the pre-K and everything would go to Roosevelt. The own advantage of that, I can see, I've done a lot of research on it, advantage is to have all your first graders in one class, so they know each other growing up. Disadvantage is, if you got three kids in school, and you got them at three different schools. And so, I mean, there's different things. If you go, the last board meeting, go into the agenda, you can look at all six of them. And it lays them all out for you. There'll be a meeting in November on it. If it passes, I mean, they'll vote on one of the six, because one of them is just stay as is. So, one of the six will get voted on.
Thank you. Janet?
All six of those budget, or of those proposals, had expenses, had numerous moving parts. And I, and the plan that I preferred, that I brought up numerous times, and I was not the only person that thought it was a good idea, but it was eliminated before it was ever proposed. And that would be moving the 110 children from the Fairbough Area Learning Center, or people, not children, I shouldn't say that, 9th through 12th graders, and moving them back to the high school where they used to be with the other 9th through 12th graders. 110 students from the Fairbough Area Learning Center to the Fairbough High School, which as of May of 2024, had 903 students and a capacity of 1,500. Simply doing that, one move, would eliminate that whole, the need for that whole building, and allow the integration of those staff into the other school system, or other school buildings. And that one was dismissed before it was even allowed to be voted on. And from my point of view, that was the most fiscally responsible. So, that's where that is, in my opinion.
Now, this committee is ongoing meeting now, is that correct?
No.
They're done after those...
No, we were to a vote on the, on the six proposals that Bente had pared it down to. So, you know, all choices were not proposed.
Okay. Candace, your opinions?
Okay, so, I taught at the Area Learning Center for 15 years, and it was a great building, and it was nice that it was remote. And I know the kids, and the kids who went to school there were typically kids who didn't fit at the high school, students who are behind in credits, students who had emotional reasons that they just were not comfortable. I mean, they just could not even be in the big high school. And I was a special ed teacher, so some of my students, you know, really had a lot better experience going to the ALC. So, now, what they're proposing is, the reason that we, I think it's important that we get rid of the ALC is, it's worth $1 million, but it needs $2.5 million to make HVAC improvements. And so, we do need to get rid of the ALC. I think that, and I mean, I, I know not everybody agrees with this, but what I prefer, what choice I would prefer is to see all the pre-K and kindergarten at Roosevelt. And that would put, I mean, otherwise, they're spread between four buildings. And I just think that we can make better use of our teachers and staff by doing that, and then having first through fifth at, split between Roosevelt, no, split between Jefferson and Lincoln. And the grade banning, I wasn't real supportive of that idea, because I think it's a lot to ask parents to move around to so many schools.
Richard, your opinions?
Well, I have quite a few opinions. One is that we should not destroy...
I know that.
You know that? Why do you think that? We should not destroy our neighborhood schools. That's number one. Second, do not put 5th grade into our middle school. For some reason, that could be one of the options, but that's, that's... The contrary to what Janet is respectfully, you don't put the ALC into the high school. I propose that you put them into the McKinley. Then they'd upgrade the kitchen, and we can take $100,000 out of the food service fund. Then, we have to remodel that for the ALC students, because they're set for the small kids there, that we borrow the money to do that, to remodel McKinley. Then, with the ALC, that's what I'm gonna propose, is that we keep the building, but we lease it out to whatever company that wants to work with it. They do all the remodeling, but we keep the land. We charge them a monthly fee, and we could, you know, use that to pay off the loan on the McKinley. I tried to get those figures from our former finance director, which no longer works for us, thank God, that... us, thank God, that, he refused to do any research. So I do not know the figures, if they will work or not. Hopefully, that our next meeting, I will propose this and say, could somebody actually truthfully look into this? Will it work or not? If it doesn't work, hey, that's fine. But again, I will oppose putting the ALC into the high school. That was proposed years ago, and was shot down many times. It does not belong there. And I believe in neighborhood schools, people move into a certain area because they want to go to their particular school that they move into.
Thank you. Jerry?
First of all, as a current board member, I want to thank you, committee members, for all the work that you put forward in bringing forth those six recommendations. I know that wasn't one meeting, I know you visited several times, also visited our sites in our school district. So thank you, because it followed up on what Ms. Steves had asked about earlier, is that we engage the community in this process, that it not be an administrator coming in saying, this is what we're recommending. And so, thank you very much for your time and effort in looking at that. In my review of the six proposals that were presented, the board presented the superintendent with a list of questions that we had regarding that presentation, and those six options that were given to us. And it seemed to me that the one option that came across most frequently from the committee was to do the K first grade at Roosevelt, and then one, five, one, one, two, three at the Roosevelt, or at Jefferson and Lincoln, and, and fifth grade, and then maintain the middle school. I think those are all great options to consider and evaluate. In my way of thinking, in my years in education and working with school districts that have gone through great reorganization in the past, is that the fundamental reason you reorganize, yes, finances are a driving factor, but more importantly, what does it mean for student achievement? If you're going to reorganize, reorganize with a fundamental basis of it's going to improve. A number of you keep talking about test scores. With this reorganization plan that we finally come up with, is that going to increase student achievement? Look at the research that's out there that says it would or wouldn't do it. If it's not going to do it, why do it? If it's going to do it, let's take a look at it more critically.
Okay, thank you.
I say something. On what Jerry was saying, he said something about fifth graders going to the middle school. If they went to the middle school, they would stay under our elementary curriculum, which means they would not transfer classes all the time. They would have one and a half pods by theirself, and they would do a regular curriculum where they'd be in the classroom all day. That was a big issue.
Good clarification.
I think, yeah, Cassie, you were first to talk about it, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we've all heard about state mandates, and I think they're, for many of us, really problematic. I guess the question is, what will you do in working towards keeping Faribault an independent school district and working with the state, if necessary, to reduce some of our mandates?
Vote new legislators in.
Pardon?
Vote new legislators. It's the bottom line, that's where it's coming from. It's coming from the state down, so vote new legislators in. Keep doing the same thing over and over. I think Einstein said this kind of stupidity, so.
You know, you, they, all these, all these grants and programs come with strings. And I think what we would have to minimize the number of grants we continue to accept going forward, to reduce the number of strings and the control that the state has over the school district.
Thank you. Candace?
I know a lot about what goes on in the classroom, but I don't really know a lot about what's happening with the mandates. But if I am elected school board, I will, you know, put my nose into that as well, and hopefully, yeah, I don't know what I'll do with them.
Thanks. Richard?
Well, for 16 years, I was elected delegate to the Minnesota School Board Association, which is, represents, I represent this school district with about 120 other delegates from all over the state. And I had some proposals. One was fully fund the mandates. It didn't really get the support of the delegate, I don't know why. But I've talked about this with Mr. Benty and Mr. Sesker, the previous superintendent, is that with that $16 billion deficit, if they would have financed our cross subsidies and either fully fund all the mandates or get rid of the ones that you're not going to finance, we would have a lot of money. We probably wouldn't even talk about reorganization. But I'll mention a name, Governor Walz did not go for that. He basically spent the $16 billion on who knows what. That, part of that could have went to all the school districts, and we would not be in financial trouble. That was confirmed by Mr. Benty and Mr. Sesker.
Thank you. Jerry Robishow.
Thank you. I think Richard indicated initially that it's not the mandates themselves, it's the unfunded mandates that are the problem in the school systems. And Faribault isn't the only one that faces these. It is across the state where we are mandated to do things, but you're mandated to do it, but we're not going to give you the dollars to implement it. Richard talked about the cross subsidy. That cross subsidy is, we have a mandate to provide services to students with disabilities. It's been on the books since 1979, federal law. The initial law was supposed to be that they, the federal government would, would fully fund that, that law, that service to students with disabilities. Minnesota came in and said, okay, we're going to enhance that, and we're going to require districts to even more so, and we'll fund a little bit more. There's significant millions of dollars that are, we are taking out of our general fund, out of our, out of our general fund to support those services to disabled students, which they rightly deserve, by the way. I'm not saying that they should not receive it, they should receive it. But it's really time for the legislature to stand up and say, okay, we promised to fully fund this, now let's fully fund it and move that direction. So it's not the mandates themselves, it's the unfunded part of it that's causing financial problems in school districts.
Thank you. Cassie Steves?
So, last session's historic education funding actually cost our district, and I can definitely look up the number, but it was a very significant amount. To echo what Mike said, is vote and vote importantly at the state level. But there's a lot of, Jerry talked about it, Richard talked about it, ways that we can still work within our budget while following the mandates. It takes unique abilities, unique grant seeking to help put mandates on what the state pushes down that mandates, what we do.
Thank you. Move on to, we've seen increasing attention paid to students who have mental health issues, and our lack of the trained personnel and whatever, and lack of money to pay for that as well. There's some of the evidence, even with school shootings, of the kids that have some mental health issues, and how are we finding the kids and giving them help? How do you think that the school can best support the students with mental health issues and support teachers in identifying kids who need that help? And Janet, you go first.
I am not in, I think that we do as much a disservice to the children by labeling them as, as, as we do serving them. And what I mean by that is, my father had a saying, if you call a dog a name, it comes every time. So we're labeling kids mentally disabled, or that label follows them all of their life. And for some people, that does a large disservice. And I would advocate for less labeling of our children in negative ways.
Well, I think that, one thing that I've seen at the high school is that we used to have four counselors, and I think that now we're down to three. So I think that, that if we support our counselors who are working with our students, and as a former special ed teacher, it's, you know, we work with our kids who do have disabilities, and it's not like it's a bad thing, but it's just something that, you know, if you don't read well, you know, we work on your reading skills. If you have behavior issues, then we try and like work with our students to, to have better solutions than acting out. And, yeah, I think that we just need to, to have people, you know, have enough time for our students, and, you know, that would be like with counselors and different staff that, that can work with kids who we may be considering having problems.
Do we have a psychologist in the district at all?
School psychologist, yes.
I didn't know that. Okay, Richard?
Well, I believe that we should treat all the students the same. If they need any kind of special help, let's get it to them. Candace mentioned counselors. Well, we cut one counselor. I voted against it. And in fact, I just talked to the principal of the high school out there. I guess one counselor is on maternity leave. Now we're down to two instead of four. So, right there, we, we should have kept that one counselor. But again, we, we can have cooperatives with maybe outside agencies, we have some of that, and also with the county. But again, let's treat the whole student mentally and physically.
Thank you. Jerry?
Thank you. For whoever brought this question up, because it is a critical question, I think you can't hardly pick up the newspaper, if you read the newspaper anymore or look at it online, the, the issues our students are facing today, and the mental issues that they are facing, and it's not mental health, it is mental health, it's not because they're mentally incapable of doing, they are struggling. Not all of our students, but a majority of our students are struggling. They are facing real issues when it comes to mental health. Pandemic was part of that process, but there's other issues. Recently, the school district established a cell phone policy. It was a wave for the day. Yes, in fact, cell phones are adding to their mental health issues. I have a personal experience with this, with an individual who had mental health issues. And I find it an insult to say that we should just not label kids, because we have kids that are hurting, and definitely, we have a responsibility to do something about it.
Thank you. Cassie Steves?
So, this question comes up with every level of government, I guess. I always just think back to how it was when I was in school. I, myself, suffered and still suffer from mental health issues, depression, anxiety, public speaking doesn't help with that. It, all, all it takes is one caring individual. I grew up in a home with, with two loving parents, and it was one teacher that said, you can do this, you're smart, you're capable, keep going. That's what saved me. That's what kept me going. So treating our students with respect, no matter what or who they are or who they want to be, and supporting their families in this journey, we're, it's not Faribault Public Schools, it's not parents against them, we're in this together. And I think that everybody deserves to be treated with respect, and everybody needs some support now or during COVID, or maybe after this debate.
I remember reading one time, a student said that one, like when he said one teacher, because the kid felt really down, and this one teacher said something to him, carried him through. So you don't know whether you're the parent or as teacher or whatever, how something really impacts someone. Mike?
I believe it's a team effort. I believe the parents, the student himself, and the school have to work on, on the thing. Parents just can't drop the kid off at school and expect the school to take care of the problems. I have a daughter that goes through some, some things like Cassie said, she has anxiety. Mr. Olson's in the back, back there, he's, he's her principal. They see each other on a daily basis to try to make sure she's, she's good. But I just think it's not so much the school, it's a team effort. Let's get everybody involved. And yes, there are some major issues out there, and when you see them, deal with them. Unfortunately, people don't deal with them, and bad things happen. Let's deal with them right away. Thank you.
I guess somebody made a comment before, but I, with the mental health, she said it's at all levels of government. Certainly, it's, we see it everywhere, and I'm glad that our hospital now has some ways to maybe help some of the kids along as well with that. In the Faribault School District, there are some misconceptions, I think, about the schools. Some of that deals with the kids leaving our district, and what they think about the schools and what they do. And I guess, what's your, the biggest misconception that you think we see about Faribault schools and how we might deal with that? Candace, you go first.
Well, I think, like you look at Northfield, it has twice the funding for students, for their schools than we do. And, and so their test scores are higher, and, and their community makeup is a lot different than ours. And so, when a misconception is that, that we're not doing, we're not teaching as well, because look at the test scores in another district. And I think that, you know, I think that there's a lot of things that have contributed to poorer test scores, and, you know, COVID didn't help, and, and now I think that there's a lot of good things that are going on at our schools, and at our health, and at our high schools. And I think that misconception is that, that we don't do well, or that our, you know, or there's a lot of, I mean, there are some safety issues, but I don't see fighting at our schools. You know, I mean, that was like a rare occasion. And, yeah, I think that, that we do well, and I think that we just have to focus on getting our, our kids ready for school, and, you know, and make up for some of the things that our parents can't support their children in. And then we'll have, you know, and our school district is inviting, I think we have a great school district. I think we, I know we have great teachers and other staff in our schools, so.
Richard, what do you see as a misconception and how we deal with it?
Yeah, some people, when they bump into me in a grocery store or whatever, that they complain about our teachers. No, we got great teachers. And it's, go into the schools, you know, check it out, go into classrooms. But they don't, they don't. You are paying for these. But again, it's, we got great teachers. We really do. That's the basis for student success. But again, we have to get that word out. Again, parents or taxpayers show up at meetings, ask questions. I would like to have more time for the public to speak, but they're limited to 15 minutes total. We should be able to, they speak, they have questions. I think the board should have an opportunity to give an answer to their questions, but that's restricted. So, again, it's, we got a great school system, can we be better? Yeah. I still believe we can be the best in the state of Minnesota.
Great, thanks. Jerry?
I too agree that we do have an excellent school system in Faribault. We have had one for years. We have a number of staff out in the audience who contributed to that excellence. I think there's an incorrect perception out there when it comes to discipline, and I think the focus has always been at the middle school, that our middle school students are just running wild in the hallways, and that is not the case. If you go to the middle school, you'll find that our students are very orderly. When you put that many adolescents in a building, you're going to have some issues that need to be addressed. But they are not running rampant in the middle school. And I think that's a perception we need to overcome, that our middle school is a well-run school system, as is our high school, as our elementary schools are. our elementary schools are done as well. And as Richard has indicated and Candace, we have some of the highest quality teaching staff in the state of Minnesota. We don't recognize them enough for what they're doing for our students. We need to applaud our teachers. We need to applaud them on a daily basis. We don't do it just during Teacher Appreciation Week. We do it every day. We must be doing it every day. Because once that gets out as to how much our teachers are doing for our students in this district, parents are going to take a look at that and say, yeah, that's a pretty good school system. I think I want my kids to go there. Now, there's a number of other reasons why parents choose to go to either Medford or Northfield. That's geographical. Or they may work in that district and they want to just take their child there. But I think that's from the standpoint of the perception of our school district, we just need to recognize that we're doing a pretty good job of educating our students. The test scores, yes, people will look at that. But as I indicated, either, that's a snapshot. That's not the longitudinal study of what our students are doing. And if you want to know what our kids are doing, ask a teacher.
Thank you. Cassie Steves?
So our, our test scores, I think unfairly, it gives the perception that our teachers aren't doing their jobs and that our kids are dumb. And again, firsthand, they have a sixth grader and a first grader, and they hear what we're talking about. They read the news, they can read, so that's good. They read the newspaper and they hear what people are saying on the, on the internet. Kids are kind, our teachers are capable, and it's a great school system. It's a snapshot. It's a very important snapshot. I'm not dismissing it at all. But our kids are growing. And, and it's not that one number that's taken one time a year is not an accurate reflection on the incredible hard work that our teachers do, the incredible hard work that our kids do, and that their parents support them.
Just a question that somebody might be able to answer that the public might not know. How many languages are represented in our school district now?
You're talking languages or dialects?
Well, I guess maybe either one or both.
Yeah, I think Cassie's right. It's like 40 some, 40 some languages in our school district.
I mean, because that's, I read with St. Paul, too. They have even more. But I don't think people realize you have 40 some languages. And then when you talk about those achievement scores and the given day they take them and what their level is, that, that really is significant. And it's hard to compare apples to apples. Mike?
One thing about test scores on what Jerry and Cassie said, I don't know if you're aware, but you know, if you, as a parent, elect to have your student not take the test, it goes down as a failure. Okay? I know a lot of prominent people in town that don't have their kids take that test. Their, their kids are A students. So right there, it's gone. Okay, we're going to move, going to move on to that. Misconceptions. We talked about a million tonight, the budget. There's a lot of misconceptions about the budget. Lot of misconceptions about, uh, uh, discipline. Is discipline done the right way? You know what? Being it's so private with what happens to a student? We don't know. We're speculating. And we're talking about mental health with, with the internet. You know what? Maybe some parents need to get off at two. Because they get on the internet and say something and bam, it's here, it's here, it's here. Next thing you know, I get two phone calls or see somebody, hey, did you hear about this? Hear about that? As, as Joe Friday once said, just the facts, ma'am. Just talk facts and forget about other stuff. Thank you.
Okay, Janet? Right.
That government agencies can fix these problems without creating problems to the tax, to the families that they take the money from to fix these problems. You know, they, I think we, we spend so much time talking about this problem and this problem, this problem. We're not acknowledging the fact that when you take the money from the families to try to solve a problem that you perceive, you're damaging those families' ability to provide for themselves and to solve their own problems. And I guess that's, I'd like us to look more at that, the damage that our own choices are causing the children and causing the families.
Thank you. Did I start with you, Candace?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. I just tried to check out your, so we're about a time to end, but you each have an opportunity to give a last spiel. And if you have another area of concern we didn't address, we didn't get to all the questions, but you're welcome to do that. And we'll start with Richard.
Yeah, well, it was a good debate. I've been through quite a few. I've been running since 1998, win and lose some, but 16 years. Hopefully get another term. If not, you know, I just go home, sit in my easy chair, turn on the TV and, you know, do something like that or do whatever I want since I'm retired. I lost my train of thought there. But again, it's, I'm honest. People know that. I'm consistent. Even Jerry, you said I'm consistent with my votes. I study the issues. I vote. I don't change it. Tell the truth. And hopefully it works. If not, that's why elections have consequences. If you don't like it, vote me out. If, if you like what I stand for, then vote yes.
Thank you. Jerry?
Richard, I know that if, if by chance you are sitting home on a Monday night, you'll turn in and watch the school board meeting.
Of course, yes.
Because you are so used to going away on Monday. First of all, I want to extend an apology if I offended anybody in my outbursts regarding mental health and what our students are facing. I do have a personal experience with somebody who had mental health issues. So I apologize if I offended anybody. That was not my intent. It is just something that is right in here for me. So with that, I want to thank again, Pat, you did a great job moderating this debate that we're facing tonight. Thank you for doing that and following you as well and AAUW. We are a community school. We're not a school district that sits by itself. It takes the whole community to engage what we need to have for our students. We need to take a look at where we're going with our students, what we want to do with our students, and how we want to get there. And the one voice that I do not feel is heard often enough are the students. We need to talk to our students. What can we do with you rather than to you? Let us hear from you. Let your voices be heard. We have two students who sit at our, our school board meetings every month. And they, in fact, their voices are dynamic. We need to hear more. I know that Mr. Olson is listening to students at the high school on a regular basis, as all our principals. We need to hear from the students of what we can do more for the betterment of their educational opportunities while they're in school district 656. And then also engage our partners with the community even more so, relating to the, the cradle to career process that the chamber has been so instrumental in working. So we need to take a look at that. I'm running for the school board because I believe in this school system. I believe that we have an excellent school system. And I want to continue to see that, that culture of educational excellence in teaching and learning continues.
Thank you. Cassie?
So when I ran in 2020, it was obviously a lot different. And I had one less child. I was pregnant with my youngest. So this whole election cycle has been a lot different, a big learning curve. And I've said it often enough, that this has been the hardest four years of my life, but also the best four years of my life. I feel like even when things don't go the way that I vote, that I was a part of a positive change. And so while I ask for your vote on November 5th, if you don't vote for me, I'll still always be a very proud Falcon. So thank you again to the AAUW.
Great, thanks. Mike?
Okay, so what are we all here for tonight? Three reasons. Kids, the kids, the kids. I will personally not let my religious or political views interfere with any vote that I have. School board has a responsibility to help educate other people's kids with other people's money. It's a huge undertaking. I would be honored to represent the Faribault Public School System with your vote on November 5th with the common sense vote. Thank you.
Janet Moline?
As you've probably guessed by now, I'm a numbers gal. And so I'd, I'd like you to do the cost benefit analysis. Are you happy with how much you are spending per child with the outcome that you're receiving for that, for your children, for all of our children, for our future? If you're happy, I'm probably not the gal. But if you think, gee, maybe we should try something else because our educational outcome has, has been declining for 15 years despite the increase in, in expenses, enrollment's declining, why would we continue doing the same thing? If you elect me, I'll do my very best to turn this ship around. And if you want any of, any of the things that I've, any of the numbers I've quoted today, feel free to email me at janetmoline@msn.com and I'll send you links.
Thank you. Candace?
Hey, I just would like to say something about our test scores. And I didn't realize what Richard said, that, you know, we do have students who elect not to take the test or families. And that, and I didn't realize that that brings it down to, you know, a low number. Another thing is, is that all our EL students, which we have a lot of, they all, you know, it doesn't matter if they come from another country and don't speak English and they're into, in our schools one day, they have to take the standardized test. So that also brings down our scores substantially. And so the reason why I think you should in, vote for me for school board is I'm in the schools, I talk to the teachers, the custodians, the secretaries, the paras, the administration. It's, I talk to the students, I talk to a lot of parents. I had one of my students in the audience for the earlier segment today. And, you know, I see him around the community. And I think that, you know, because I have an insider perspective, that I could bring a lot to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And to thank you all tonight. It was a learning experience for me and I'm sure the audience. Remember, you'll be voting for three candidates. And one candidate, Tabitha, was not here this evening, but, so we'll be electing three new candidates. And that will be on November 5th, of course. It will be, this discussion will be broadcast on our Faribault TV. You'll have to contact them to find out the dates that they're going to put the broadcast on itself. But I really thank you so much for coming and answering a lot of questions. I too believe in the Faribault School District. I mean, I've been proud to be part of it here. And I, I think that we want to keep working for, what do you say, kids, kids, kids. That's, that's what we want to do. And AAUW, thanks you all for participating in this tonight. You know, we're nonpartisan in terms of our political stuff, but we like to promote educational things. And we, we give scholarships annually. And we want people learning over the lifespan. It doesn't stop when school is on, it starts forever. And just a little promo, I'm going to tell you, we invite you all to come to the Halloween breakfast on October 27th, sponsored by us. And again, that's to make money for scholarships. It's a great breakfast down at the American Legion on Sunday, November 27th, October 22nd. But I thank you all tonight. It was really great to hear from you and listen for longer. Thank you.